Got excited there. Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetham?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Mansfield?
Here.
Marshawn?
Yes.
Wow, ouch is right.
Here. If you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for the invocation which will be offered by Mike Popovich representing First Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together as a city. We ask your blessing and direction on this council and those of the city present to do business. We know, Lord, that you are the God of creation. All authority comes from you and we would ask your blessing in the direction of that authority to the good of the people of this valley and this town. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We will move to agenda item three as a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, material claims. Council may wish to consider material claims for the period of September 10 through September 30, 2022. B, golf advisory committee reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Billy Satterfield to continue serving on the golf advisory committee. Billy's term will begin October 22, 2022, and will expire October 22, 2025. C, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Catherine Hickock to serve on the Parks and Recreation Board. Catherine's term will begin October 7, 2022, and expire October 7, 2024. D, Pocatello Regional Airport Commission appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Norris Gangstorm to serve as a member of the Pocatello Regional Airport Commission. Norris's term will begin October 7, 2022, and expire October 7, 2024. E, council decision Western Skies Division III final plat approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision to approve the final plat for Western Skies Division III to subdivide approximately 22.5 acres of land into 55 lots, one of which will be non-buildable, subject to conditions. The subdivision will be accessed from extensions of East Point Drive and Mariner's Lane to the north, with East Point Drive connecting to Bassalt Drive to the west. A new road to be named Grassland Road will be stubbed to Lot 20, Block 5. F, Police Personnel Administration rules. Council may wish to approve proposed changes to Pocatello Police Department's Personnel Administration rules.
Mr. Mayor?
Council President Cheetham.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda items A through F as outlined in Agenda Item Number Three.
Second.
We have a motion by President Cheetham and a second by Councilwoman Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the rolls?
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marshawn?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item four, confirmation of council member appointments Nichols and Mangum. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of the following. A, appoint Brent Nichols to serve as a city council member fulfilling an unexpired term of Claudia Ortega, City Council Member, Seat Number Two, with the appointment to be effective October 6, 2022. And B, appoint Corey Mangum, am I saying it right, Corey? Corey Mangum to serve as a city council member fulfilling an unexpired term of Roger Bray, City Council Member, Seat Number Three, with the appointment to be effective October 6, 2022. Upon confirmation, Connie Kendall, City Clerk, will administer the oath of office to each member.
Mr. Mayor?
Council President Cheetham.
Mr. Mayor, it gives me great pleasure to ask the council to confirm the council member appointments of Brent Nichols and Corey Magnum as outlined in Agenda Item Number Four, Items A and B.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Council President Cheetham and a second by Marshawn. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetham?
Yes.
Marshawn?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Connie, could you please administer the oath?
Sure will. Mr. Nichols? Stand right here in front of the dais. You'll raise your right arm and reach down.
Hold up. Hold up just a minute.
Are you getting out of the picture?
Not photobomb this one. I photobomb some photos, but that's what I wanted to say, Adam.
I, Brent Nichols, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of City Councilmember according to the best of my ability. Congratulations, Council. I, Corey Magnum, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of City Councilmember according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
I quite frankly feel like we actually photobombed it by moving over there. So I don't know why you moved the camera over to here to take the picture. Where are you at, Marleyce?
Why y'all moved your camera?
Thank you very much. Congratulations to two new council members. Pretty excited to have you on the council and I look forward to being able to work with you and it's going to be nice to see how this council works together. I offered to let them say a few words, but they kind of said no to that. I don't know if that was a hard no or if it was just a no.
Well, I'll say something. I'm honored by this appointment. Thank you very much. I look forward to working with you all on behalf of the citizens of Pocatello.
Super. Thank you.
It's an honor and a privilege. I am humbled to have been selected and I want to continue to build upon the legacy that is the city of Pocatello. So thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we move on, for the benefit of those at home and those who may be attending have regularly and see a little different order on the dais.
Oh, yes.
That was an idea we had to give the new council people a chance to sit closer to the center, be more the center of attention, and have an easier way to get ahold of the mayor. So if they have a question or something, which they may have, they only have to tap one person to get ahold of him instead of six as it goes down the line to get his attention. So you may see things move around up here a little bit. We aren't necessarily assigned to any particular seat. We represent a position, but it isn't assigned seating up here. So you may see a change.
Okay. Super. Thank you. That's a good clarification. He's left-handed anyway and he didn't write.
That's right. I won on this side.
He was tired of me jamming.
So it's good. It's a good deal. Thank you very much and council, thank you for the confirmation of those appointments. And we'll move to Agenda Item Number Five as a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On October 13, City Council Work Session has been canceled. October 20, City Council Liaison Work Session Clarification Meeting has been canceled. October 20, 5:30 PM will be a regular clarification meeting. 6 PM will be a regular City Council meeting. October 10, Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day, city offices will remain open. During this holiday, sanitation department collection trucks will remain on their regular schedule. Early voting is currently underway at Bennett County Elections Office, 141 North Sixth Avenue. Voting hours are Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 4:30 PM. The last day to vote early is November 4. Election Day is November 8. Zoo Idaho will be open on weekends only through October 30. As a reminder, the open burn ban in wildland urban interface areas continues. I'm going to poke you in the area. All right. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Six is a daycare license denial appeal, Young. Madison Young will be present to appeal the decision of Pocatello Police Department staff which denied Madison a daycare license. Good evening, Tori.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Tori Eldridge. I'm in the Pocatello Police Department Licensing Officer and I'm here for a denial of a daycare license on Madison Young. The reasons for the denial are Ms. Young had a conviction of an assault in 2017. She was also convicted for misuse and fraudulent use of credit cards in 2021. It was a plea and abeyance charge or disposition. And then she was also convicted on September 21 of 2022 of damaging property. She is also pending charges from an incident that happened in April of this year.
Council, any questions for Tori before she steps away? Okay, Madison?
I apologize if I'm a little emotional this evening. There have been plenty of opportunities in my life when choosing the right choice would have been easier and it would have been the right thing to do. It could have affected my life more positively than another outcome and it may have benefited me in a helpful way. However, I've learned some imperative life lessons that your average 26-year-old doesn't even know how to think up. My background on paper proves to most that I have been troubled in my decision-making abilities. Some of my choices have been reckless and inappropriate. Most of those choices made in my early twenties were exactly that. It was a few years before I was diagnosed with bipolar disorder that I was arrested for my first legal offense. At just 18 years old, I had been caught with illegal psychedelic mushrooms and was facing a serious felony less than a year of graduating high school. Up until that point, I had been nannying for a family in Southern California where my love for children first was sparked. Things were seemingly fine during those nine months. I was passionate about the children that I cared for 60 hours a week. I felt a sense of purpose and the new experience of living far from home was exciting. Little did I know that my depression and mental illness would substantially increase throughout those nine months. After parting ways with that family and returning back to Northern Utah where I'm from, I began hanging out with the wrong crowds, crowds that didn't have my future or my best interest at heart. The impulsive and unfought through dangerous crowds, after my first arrest, I was given an opportunity to have those charges dropped from my record with compliance with probation for one year and no more offenses. I successfully completed and began moving in a different direction. This direction soon turned into a relationship with an individual who I felt I could help and save from their troubles. With them, I was quickly introduced to a toxic relationship. Just being 19 at the time, I was taken advantage of in every single way, every single day. I was treated like an object in possession with very little freedoms and a loss of voice and choice. I know that violence is never the answer, yet I chose to physically hurt my abuser that day. Almost three years of abuse ended that day because I chose to act spitefully and violently. Shortly after this event, I attempted suicide, facing serious charges once again and my depression peaking worse than ever. My attorney recommended I try out a specialty program called Mental Health Court. This would take a mental evaluation, therapy, substance abuse treatments, groups, classes, and many other requirements in order to participate. At this time, I was then diagnosed with bipolar type I disorder. I tried out various medications to get my mood stable, depression contained, and anxiety under control, and I was able to maintain a healthy lifestyle. For the last five years, the requirements of Mental Health Court have blessed me and weighed heavy in my treatment of my mental illness. Regular attendance of therapy, successful completion of moral recognition therapy, outpatient substance abuse treatments, various groups, and an acceptance of myself. This last spring, I fell off that treatment after missing an injection of my mood stabilizer. I had a serious argument with some important family members and as a result, my sister's windshield and my parents' house window was broken. I've since then dealt with the alleged child endangerment charges that were a red flag when I applied for the license. It has been dismissed and I accepted the criminal mischief charge of breaking the windshield and the window. I have also been paying restitution. I have enrolled in anger management and made significant strides to ensure the safety of myself and others. Nothing aside from this spring incident has happened since those assault and theft charges almost five years ago. I also had a daughter in 2019 and she changed my life in a major way. She has reminded me of my passion and desire to work with children. It's the only sense of purpose I've been able to feel in a long time and making a difference for the future generations is important to me. Learning with them, hopefully teaching them for my mistakes, and also instilling a sense of hope. I hope to be able to not let a background define who you are today and the work you've put in. I also have a stack of papers here with letters of recommendation, my diagnosis, the meds that I take, and documents from the First Judicial Court of Cache County, Utah stating that those charges were dismissed and that I have been sentenced to pay the restitution and whatnot. So if I might approach, I am happy to hand those over.
Council, questions?
I just wanted to clarify, the pending charges are dismissed?
Yes, as of the 21st of September.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry, one more. You mentioned a new program, but are you still in treatment? Are you in therapy?
Yes, I still attend regular therapy. It's about twice a month and then it fluctuates just depending on how I feel I'm doing mentally.
Is one of the letters from?
From a therapist, yes.
From a therapist? Okay. Sorry.
Councilmember Mansfield?
Do you have a position that you intend to take if this appeal is granted?
Yes, I was working at Pocatello Valley Montessori. I had been working for three weeks before the decision came back to deny my license.
And you would return back there in the case of an appeal approval?
Yes.
Is the owner or director present or has he written or he or she written a letter of recommendation?
No, but that's something that I can get.
Here's some court documents this week. Other questions, council for Madison? Okay, thank you, Madison. Any other questions for Tori, council?
Tori, is your information then perhaps out of date from what we were just presented?
So that is what I have on her criminal record is that there's the child endangerment.
But the issue of pending charges?
But it might be out of date. I don't, but that's what I have.
Okay.
And I also.
I can put bricks down.
Councilmember Nichols?
When was the date of her last conviction?
The 21st of September.
Of what year?
This year.
Of this year?
And that was the mischief?
Okay.
Yes.
Can somebody, whether that be Jericho Tori, what is the legal definition of criminal mischief?
Would you like me to tackle that?
Yes.
Well, this is a Utah case and so it's based on a Utah statute, which I don't have in front of me. But I'm guessing it's kind of a catch-all type of a statute that allows for them to charge that based on some sort of disorderly conduct or something of that nature. Councilmember Marshawn might have actual more input on that based on his background.
I think it probably covers a ton. My question here is, the ordinance says 10 years, right? 10 years. So I guess that's what I look at. It's unfortunate, but that's kind of the law and that's what we run off of, so.
Other questions? Any questions for Madison?
Ready for a motion, Mr. Mayor?
I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, based on the information we've received this evening, I would make a motion to deny the appeal.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion by Cheetham and a second by President Cheetham and a second by Lurick. Wendy's your name. Would you please call the roll?
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Magnum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marshawn?
Yes.
Nichols?
Did we get all of this information back?
Yes.
Madison, would you like this back? Thank you. Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Seven is a public hearing, North Sixth Avenue Right of Way Vacation Request. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Bennett County represented by Hal W. Jensen for the vacation of the right of way of North Sixth Avenue between East Clark Street and East Center Street. I declare the public hearing open. Council, has there been any ex parte communication in regards to this?
Mr. Mayor? I did have a brief conversation with Commissioner Huff regarding their intent on this and what their plans were for that area.
So I would inquire, Council President Cheetham, do you have anything that is based on that conversation that you feel would prevent you from being impartial in tonight's decision?
No. I don't like him that much.
Is there anything other than what you just described that you learned from that conversation that the rest of the council should know? That you don't think will come out, may or may not come out in the hearing?
It shouldn't, no. No, there was no private conversation. This was a public conversation.
Okay. I mean, is there, I guess at the end of the public hearing, I would ask the same question of Council President Cheetham. If there was additional information that you gained from that that the rest of the council should know, maybe?
Only that their intent is not to build on that property, that apparently there is a desire to do some add-on to that area, but it would not be in the vacated right of way.
Perfect. Okay.
Super. All right. Thank you. Has there been any other ex parte communication? Okay, Hal?
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. New council members, welcome. We're excited to have you on the council and see things move ahead for the city of Pocatello. We appreciate your time and your efforts and your opportunity to serve. My name is Hal Jensen. I'm the planning director for Bennett County and have been asked by the commission to represent this particular item. We are requesting the vacation of the right of way of Sixth Street between Clark and Center, which is the 600 block, I believe, or 100 block. What block is it? How's that for?
The 100 block?
100. Sorry, I had another item that was involving sixes and anyway, the 100 block. The reason for is that services to the county have continued to grow over time. As our community has continued to grow, so has the county, et cetera. There's a number of things that have taken place over the years historically. Of course, the jail, the courthouse. In addition to the courthouse, eventually a grocery store went away. At some point, the county bought a grocery store across the street, turned it into an annex. It has served many different functions over the years. They also have the juvenile detention facility kitty corner to the courthouse. We now have secured a grant to build a new teen assessment and intervention center, which will be built within the near future. Permit is actually in place now with the building department, City Pocatello, on the north side parking lot of the annex, which would basically be on the Clark Street side. Okay? One of the issues that has arisen is that there's a fair amount of foot traffic between the separate buildings. One of the other items that others may not be aware of, the county is under contract with rental of a suite in the Sterling Building. So we have that particular function with county function for traffic back and forth through that area, et cetera. So in this process, we have found that the county services have started to develop somewhat like a campus. Because of that, there's a lot of traffic that goes across Sixth Street and for safety and for security, we are requesting this vacation. It does two things. Actually, it does three things. First is that we feel it provides greater safety for the pedestrian traffic. The second item is that it allows us to restrict vehicle traffic, more so moving from south to north, coming from Center Street, moving to Clark Street, allowing traffic to still maintain a through fare coming from north to south and taking the traffic lane and moving it against the curb line of the courthouse along Sixth Street. Then taking the east side adjacent to the annex and developing additional off-street parking. In that process, it also allows us to take the entrance between the courthouse and the jail, which is a small one that accesses what would be referred to as the south side of the existing courthouse parking lot. There's a grass area that we anticipate to enhance our accessible parking so that it is no longer in the middle of the parking lot with people needing accessible access all the way around to the east side entrance and through the courthouse to the elevator. So it's been studied. It's not absolute. At some point, if the vacation is granted, we would be working with streets and engineering relative to how we do restrict traffic, potentially constructing an island on the east side of the road so that it restricts traffic going from south to north and allowing us to develop that parking on that east side curb line. You have the staff report as well as my narrative. If you have other questions, I would be glad to answer them at this time, but that is the intent. Safety, security, and restricting traffic.
Okay, we have a councilmember Marshawn?
First question is parking over there is terrible now. You're going to fill that north side parking lot with a building? So all that parking is leaving?
Correct.
And we're going to restrict it on Sixth Street if it gets vacated? Where are people going to park?
So with the teen assessment center, there, I believe there are 14 to 16 spaces that will be dedicated to that facility. Currently, the county is under contract with the LDS Church for the parking lot across the street. Currently, the county is under contract with the LDS Church for the parking lot across the street. I will share with you that I was involved in that project years ago with the vacation of Sixth Street, the development of the parking lot between and a shared parking agreement between Buddies, the county, and the LDS Church. That that agreement is still in place. I believe that the agreement is that the parking, the county has use of the parking lot during the day up until a given hour, 6 o'clock. I don't know exactly what that agreement is. I wasn't involved in those negotiations and contracts. They aren't allowed to use it, I believe, on Saturday, Sunday.
So I guess part of my question is, and I don't think you can answer this, DMV, guessing is not gonna move. You lose, all I'm saying is you lose that, we're gonna lose that parking when you build that building. We're gonna end up in all the neighborhoods. Or do people understand they can park there? And then you're worried about people crossing Sixth Street. I'd rather cross Sixth than Center if I have to get to DMV from that parking lot. So how do we make that safer?
Point noted. The item that has come to mind is that we work to put in a electronic signal similar to what we've placed at Olympus and in the school zones, et cetera, when people need to cross at the dedicated crosswalk that is between the parking lot and the corner of Sixth and and Center. That's the only viable solution at this point relative to safety at that point. To the best of my knowledge, Councilman Marchand, we have a net loss of 10 to 12 spaces in that area, which we have the opportunity under that agreement to pick up over across the street.
Okay, thank you.
One doesn't necessarily solve the other, but by the nature of the growth of the county and until such time, a commission decides that they need to build a new office building for county services and perhaps leave the courthouse dedicated to nothing but courthouse functions, et cetera. There this is a solution that we seek for the greatest sense of safety that we can at this point.
Well, and I understand that, I guess the other part of it is, is looking back, right? If we start getting tons of cars, it's a county facility, but they start parking in neighborhoods. Is that gonna cause our police department problems taking care of parking, those types of things? I don't want it to be worse. I want it to be better.
I'm not here to be a smart aleck, but is that rhetorical or are you asking me a question?
It's rhetorical. I mean, I don't wanna get, I don't, I don't wanna shut something down, right?
Right.
And and take up parking if I lived in that neighborhood and all of a sudden now I'm getting cars pushed into my neighborhood where people are parking to do business at the courthouse and I can't get out of my driveway. I don't wanna, I don't wanna cause more problems. I want them to look at the parking problems because that will be the biggest issue, in my opinion, just parking.
Between between the county and an apartment complex on the corner, one block east, and the post office, it's problematic.
Right.
Point noted.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Lurick?
My question is about the elections office and voting. There are people, I mean, obviously, it's convenient for everybody to be able to just drive right up and run in and early vote and that kind of thing. But there are people that do drive-up voting where they bring out the ballots because they can't come inside. How will that be handled?
So that function can also take place at the opposite side on inside the parking lot underneath what used to be, for lack of a better description, an old Sallyport. There is.
Oh, on the other side of the elections office, from that?
There's a doorway that serves in from from what would be considered the west side coming in.
Okay. I was concerned. What's that?
I didn't even know you could request that.
You can.
You're not quite 60 yet, mayor, so no problem.
My question is, and it just popped out of my mind.
I'm sorry, that's my fault.
Accessibility.
Yeah. Oh, I know what I was gonna say. Part of that is that it's really helpful for their staff because they don't have a lot of staff to be able to just run right outside in front where they can be seen and everything and not have to go like to the corner or anything. But if they can go out the other side, there's windows there too.
Correct. The same amount of visibility is given on the west side as there is on the east side.
Yeah. So that would that would take care of that issue. Okay.
Super.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yeah, this dedicated signal you talked about, who will bear that cost? Who will bear the cost of this dedicated signal that you talked about?
We haven't even gone down that path until we understand all of the implications of a vacation, councilman.
But with this dedicated signal, do you expect there would be any cost to the city of Pocatello?
He's talking about the flashing crosswalk.
I would not say, I would not say yes, but I can't commit. I don't have the legislative and the expending powers that are granted by the commission.
They're nodding.
They're noncommittal.
Okay, any other questions for Hal while he's up there?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I'm looking at the pictures that were submitted, you said we're going to only lose a net of 12 parking places?
Including that along the street.
Okay. But the building that's proposed, is it going to take the entire parking lot on the north side of the current annex building?
No, it takes approximately half.
Half. So there would still be some parking on the north side of that addition?
That is correct.
Okay.
There's approximately, I believe, 12 to 16 spaces dedicated to that facility in between the new facility and the existing annex.
Any other questions for Hal?
Where we have our potential net loss is X amount in that parking lot, but we potentially gain by taking parallel parking along the curb lines and doing perpendicular parking against the curb on the east side.
On the?
Instead of 20 to 23 feet long, you're looking at nine feet.
On the east side of Sixth Street?
On the east side, yes. So you would be parking against, you'd be parking nose-first against the annex, against the curb line.
So you could even still possibly do the drive-by voting on that side if you wanted, where you just pull up into a spot?
You could.
Okay, thank you. Steph?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Carl Anderson, City of Pocatello, senior planner for the record. So tonight, as previously stated, you had before you a request submitted by Bannock County and represented by Hal Jensen to vacate the public's interest in approximately .413 acres, more or less, of North Sixth Avenue. The petitioner's desires to vacate the right-of-way of North Sixth Avenue located between East Clark and East Center Street, extending approximately 300 feet. The subject right-of-way was originally platted with the Pocatello Townsite blocks 234 and 268. The existing right-of-way is 60 feet in width and appears to encompass the road, on-street parking, and sidewalk area. There appears appears to be an existing water line and stormwater infrastructure within the subject right-of-way. Comments received and response to utility notice are summarized within Table 1 on Page 2 of the staff report. The Public Works Memorandum dated September 27, 2022, Attachment B, outlined seven conditions that shall be addressed and approved prior to the recording of the vacation ordinance should the council council grant the request. As a point of clarification, Bannock Transportation Planning Organization, ETPO, is listed in Table 1 as non-response. When reviewing the utility notice in preparation for today's meeting, it appears that BTPO was not on that list of recipients. Staff was able to make contact with Maury Byington of BTPO prior to today's meeting. Based on that conversation with Mr. Byington of BTPO, they are not opposed to the proposed vacation. However, they did express concerns related to traffic flow through the area. So just wanna make sure the council is aware of that. Public notice was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the property property by certified mail and published twice in the Out of State Journal on September 20th and 27th. To date, no written public comment has been received. Based on the information provided by the applicant contained within this report, staff recommends approval of the request to vacate the subject right-of-way with the conditions listed in the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and I will be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Questions for Carl, council?
So the easement includes the sidewalk on both sides, east and west side of Sixth Street?
The right-of-way?
The right-of-way, yes, I'm sorry.
As I understand it, and that's based on aerial view using JAS when looking at it. Public Marriquel, Public Works, is here to verify that if I'm mistaken.
The answer is yes, it does include that. That 60 feet goes from the back of sidewalk pretty much to the back of sidewalk.
And there is utilities underneath those sidewalks?
I cannot answer that one for surety. But I know that there is some utilities as far as they're under the asphalt for sure, but there could be some communications that could be under those sidewalks lately. There's been a lot of that going on, so there could be some utilities that are there as far as communications.
So if we give up the right-of-way, how does that affect our ability to service those utilities?
In the public memorandum that we put out, we are requesting that that easement stay in contact, meaning they can't put any major structures or build anything like that over there and that we can still retain a public utility easement and access easement. As Mr. Jensen has talked about, there will be access, possibly one way in that. So we're asking that that something like that happens so that emergency services and stuff can still access if there's issues that way. Also, for the water and the storm, for instance, at the city-owned utilities, we can still get in and access that, whether it's parking and everything like that is fine over it. It's no different than the roads, but no structures and so forth.
Thank you, Merrill.
And that's Marriquel for those people working at home.
Sorry. Merrill, Public Works engineer for the city of Pocatello.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions for Carl? Thank you, Carl. And he's mentioned there was no written comments. Madam Clerk, has there been any in your office?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Then we would look for, I would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application? Any testimony opposed to the application? Well, it gives you an opportunity to speak more. Do you wanna keep talking, Hal? He's the first one that's ever said, yeah, I do wanna talk more.
Every 15 years.
Are you a politician or?
Never have been, never wanted to be. Thank you. Real quickly, two items. Councilman Cheatham, the items that we will need to study are twofold. One is whether or not we, and working with engineering relative to restricting traffic on that east side with potential islands that we could suck out asphalt, place curb, et cetera, so that we restrict that traffic on the east side going south to north. Okay? The other one, the other item will be studying with the city, the issues of pedestrian traffic across Sixth Street. And if that is something that the commission desires that we investigate and pursue relative to an electronic flashing signal that would restrict traffic, I can tell you that when I come in to the courthouse from my office to do business at the courthouse, depending on the day of the week and the time of the day, it's easy to cross the street. However, I will note that when there is traffic that sees you waiting to cross, it's a 50-50 chance on whether someone stops for you and allows you to cross or not. So it's a matter of, to be quite honest, the university has been down that particular growing pain, of course, and that is restricted. More and more people are paying attention when people are in the sidewalk waiting to cross and you're seeing more and more traffic yield. It's another item that, it's another area, to be quite honest, that is going to need to be conditioned relative to driving patterns to the patrons of Pocatello.
You know, I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I've seen, I live in the area and cross Olympus a lot. I was involved in the installation of the flashing signals on South Fifth by ISU, and I don't see people paying a lot of attention to those things. The day we put that in down there, we hadn't finished the dedication, five minutes since somebody just charged across without even pushing the button. And cars were blowing through that thing when it was flashing. They just aren't paying attention to those flashing signals. I question their effectiveness, I guess. I think it's something that we need to learn, but at this point, I don't think they're very effective.
And as a comment, we appreciate, there are some of us, I believe, in the community that appreciate the signs that identify particular areas that you should be slowing down and that you should yield by state statute. You need to be paying attention that you yield to pedestrians in the crosswalk, so.
Yeah.
I wanted to clarify those items, Mayor, relative to to those two items. Thank you.
And I'm running for office? No, I'm just kidding. Thank you very much, Dan.
I'm too old for that.
I declare that public hearing closed. Counsel, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed? Councilmember Josh?
Everybody face your sign.
It starts with an M. We've got too many M's now.
Well, if I might add a comment, and I lived in Helenon, went to college at Carroll College, and the county courthouse that included the DMV in the backside adopted this exact same plan of one-way traffic with with the diagonal parking on the backside, and it greatly improved efficiency and safety in that area. And it was even more paramount there because directly next to that road was a large swath of neighborhoods. It was amazing at the way at which it almost turned into an effective drive-through that very clearly dedicated the way traffic needed to move and drastically increased people's attentiveness in that area. So I think it's, I really approve of the ideas in taking that complex, especially with the business that has to take place on both sides of the road.
So Councilmember Mansfield, are you making a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the right-of-way vacation on the North Sixth Avenue subject to legal and with the conditions as listed in the packet.
I'll second.
You gotta speed up, but I'm there, young lady. We have a motion by Councilmember Mansfield and a second by Cheatham.
Can I make a comment before we vote?
Sure.
I agree with what Councilmember Mansfield just said. I live in that neighborhood and I use that street very frequently, as I know many people do, mainly to get from the post office back over to, you know, my neighborhood. And so it's gonna be an inconvenience for people that live there that are used to just cutting through on that street. But I think we will, you know, give us some time and we'll get used to that and we'll just go around a little bit more. And I think that will become, you'll hear grumbling in the beginning, but I think it'll become second nature after a while and we'll just be used to it. And I think the inconvenience is outweighed by the the safety factor. I think it will improve safety. So to me, it's it's a good thing to do.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Madham?
Yes.
Marshand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eight, Employee Assistance Program Service Agreement. Council may wish to approve the mayor's signature, the mayor's signature, subject to legal department review on a contract with Kira Link for the employee assistance program as discussed at the May 26, 2022 budget development meeting. The cost per month for sworn officers, emergency communication officers, evidence technicians, and sworn firefighter personnel is $16 per person and $3.10 per person for general employees. This is a three-year contract and has been budgeted in the fiscal year 2023 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve agenda item number eight, the Employee Assistance Program Services Agreement, and approve the mayor's signature, subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Marchand. You're gonna have to get a little quicker on your sheet there.
I'm done for the night.
Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Marshand?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
I'm gonna mess your name up. Maggum?
Mangum.
There we go. Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, Firefighters Local Union 187. Council may wish to approve a memorandum of understanding amending the collective bargaining agreement entered November 4, 2021, amending Article 18, Section D, and deleting Article 28, Section 1.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman, yes?
I would move that we approve the memorandum of understanding, amending the collective bargaining agreement entered on November 4th with the amendment of Article 18, Section D, and deleting Article 28, Section 1.
Second.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lurick? Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Madham?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 10, Piggyback Bid Acceptance, Sourcewell Contract for Caterpillar Excavator Lease Water Department. Counsel may wish to consider piggybacking Sourcewell competitively bid contract number 032119CAT via Caterpillar Incorporated for the lease of one new CAT Track Excavator 330 consisting of five annual payments of $33,858.3 with a scheduled balloon payment in year six in the amount of $224,999.98. The cost has been budgeted in the Water Department budget. Counsel may also wish to authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents pertaining to the lease subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we accept the piggyback bid acceptance with Sourcewell Contract for Caterpillar Excavator Lease for the Water Department, and authorize your signature on all applicable documents pertaining to the lease and subject to legal department review.
Second.
All right, I got it. I wasn't going to look anywhere else. Appreciate that. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mangum. Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marchand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, Bid Acceptance for Transmission Line Replacement for 5 Million Gallon Tank 5 MG Water Department. Counsel may wish to consider recommendations of staff and award the bid for the transmission line replacement for 5 MG tank project to Timberlake Construction LLC in the amount of $3,228,912.30, and authorize the mayor to execute all contract documents, including change orders up to 5% of the project total subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would move that we accept the bid for the transmission line replacement from Timberlake Construction LLC and authorize you to execute all contract documents, including change orders up to 5% subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
I'm going to mess your name up, first time, Mangum?
Yes.
Marchand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
She messed my name up earlier today, too, so everybody knows that. Agenda item 12, Declaration of Surplus Property, 1.4 acres located at Riverside Drive and Aspen Lane. Counsel may wish to declare a 1.4-acre parcel of city-owned property located at the corner of Riverside Drive and Aspen Lane as underutilized and further declare their intent to exchange said property for real property of equal value.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, counsel member Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that the council declare the surplus property as 1.4 acres located Riverside Drive and Aspen Lane as underutilized and further declare an intent to exchange the property for real property of equal value as listed in agenda item 12.
Yeah, I'll second that.
We've got a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Nichols. Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marchand?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, State and Local Agreement, Flandre Drive Safety Improvement Project Agreement, Idaho Transportation Department. Counsel may wish to approve a state and local agreement between the City of Pocatello and the State of Idaho Transportation Department for the Flandre Drive Safety Improvements Project, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. Counsel may also wish to authorize the use of funds in the amount of $4,000 for the required match for the project. Funds for the match are available in Fund 70. Funds for the project have been previously awarded by the Local Highway Safety Improvement Program.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would move that we adopt a resolution and approve the state and local agreement between the City of Pocatello and the State of Idaho Transportation Department for the Flandre Drive Safety Improvements Project, authorize your signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review, and authorize the use of funds in the amount of $4,000 for the required match for this project.
Second.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Marchand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 14, Intermountain Gas Easement for Road Reservoir Yard. Counsel may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a utility easement with Intermountain Gas for a proposed gas regulator station at the reservoir yard located off of 4 Road, subject to legal department review. The value of the 450 square foot easement is $250.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move, excuse me, I move that we approve the Intermountain Gas easement for 4 Road and 4 Road Reservoir Yard, and authorize the mayor to sign a utility easement with Intermountain Gas as outlined in agenda item 14, subject to legal department review.
Always got to put that in.
Yeah.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mangum. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marchand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 15, Land Purchase Agreement for Water Department, Well Facility Water Department. Counsel may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign all pertinent documents subject to legal department review, authorizing the purchase of a .36 acre parcel of land described as Lot 1, Block 1, Highline Partnership as a potential site for a future water well facility. The purchase price is $81,000, and funds are available in the Water Department reserves. Councilwoman Lurick?
I'm on a roll.
You are. Keep it going.
I move that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign all pertinent documents subject to legal department review, authorizing the purchase of a 36 acre parcel of land. Pardon?
Point 36.
Oh, .36, excuse me, my context aren't very good. I'll say as outlined in agenda item number 15.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Marchand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 16, Fire Department Aerial Apparatus Purchase Agreement. Counsel may wish to approve and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents for the procurement of a Pierce aerial apparatus for the fire department in the amount of Funds are available in the fiscal year 2023 fire department budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the purchase of the fire department aerial apparatus agreement and authorize your signature on all pertinent documents and subject to legal department review as outlined in agenda item 16. Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Mansfield. I'm sorry, council, council president Cheatham and council member Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Marchand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 17A, An Ordnance Annexing Approximately 22.97 Acres of Land to Extend the city, to extend the Pocatello city limits west of I-15 and south of I-86. Counsel, how do you wish this ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, council president Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move the ordinance, agenda item 17A, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Marchand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, annexing and zoning approximately 22.97 acres of land located west of I-15 and south of I-86. Said property more particularly described in Exhibit A of this ordinance, providing for the city clerk to file a certified copy of this ordinance with the Idaho State Tax Commission and with the Bannock County Auditor, Treasurer, and Assessor in accordance with Idaho Code Sections 50-223 and 63-215, providing for said land to be zoned residential medium-density families, single-family, RMS, and residential medium-density multifamily, RMM, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marchand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 17B, An Ordnance Annexing Approximately 165 Acres of Land to Extend the Pocatello city limits north of Highway 91, south of South Valley Road, east of Bannock Highway, and west of I-15. Counsel, how do you wish to have the ordinance read?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would move that, I move the ordinance, agenda item 17B, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Marchand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, annexing and zoning approximately 165 acres of land located north of Highway 91, south of South Valley Road, east of Bannock Highway, and west of I-15. Said property more particularly described in Exhibit A of this ordinance, providing for the city clerk to file a certified copy of this ordinance with the Idaho State Tax Commission and with the Bannock County Auditor, Treasurer, and Assessor in accordance with Idaho Code Sections 50-223 and 63-215, providing for said land to be zoned public lands, facilities, PLF, and residential medium-density single-family, RMS, with concurrent comprehensive plan map use, comprehensive plan land use map designations of public, P, and residential, R, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marchand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 17C, An Ordnance Rezoning Approximately .41 Acres of Land Located at 1737 North Harrison from Zoning Designation Light Industrial LI to Residential Commercial Professional, RCP. Counsel, how would you wish this ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor?
Council president Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, I move the ordinance, agenda item 17C, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marchand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, rezoning approximately .41 acres of land located at 1737 North Harrison, Pocatello, Idaho, from zoning designation Light Industrial LI to Residential Commercial Professional, RCP. Said property being more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marchand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item 18, Items from the Audience. This time has been set aside to hear items from the audience not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a total of 15 minutes for this agenda item and 3 minutes per speaker. With that, Heather Diselkun.
Heather Diselkun, Pocatello, Idaho. Welcome, council members, Councilman Mangum and Councilman Nichols. For your benefit, to, well, April 20, I co-founded a local Facebook group called Pocatello for Accountable Government Entities. To the best of my knowledge, my 19 years here in Pocatello, and this is the first time this has been attempted, we obviously by our name are a public accountability group, but we're also see ourselves as an educational group, and we try to help educate voters because we do really feel that voter apathy is a problem in our area. Tonight represents my fourth attempt to get answers to questions on a document that this city provided to my group. The document was provided on September 7, 7 of 2022. I appeared before this council on September 14, appealing to you to please answer our questions. I followed up the next week with an email to Councilman Mansfield, Councilman Marchand, Councilwoman Lurick, and Councilman Cheatham, and Mayor Blad. We have yet to receive response to our questions. I feel that our questions are very reasonable and respectful. This was a document provided to us by the City of Pocatello. It has some concerning, has a concerning column in it, FY 23 adjusted budget, in which it shows a $3.2 million deduction in expenditures for a budget year they hadn't even yet started when we received the document. If you add up the total deductions, it shows a grand deduction of over $15 million, and you've all received those documents in the email. So I'm just asking, please, for the, have some communication going here, help us understand what this document is about. You put us in a position where we're having to guess what's going on. Either you don't know, you know, you don't want to share the information. I don't like to have to speculate. So I'm just here for the fourth time asking to please help us to understand what that fifth column represents, why it shows deductions in the expenditures, and that's all I have to say. I do have copies of the document and the email for our newest council members, so I'll handle that now.
Thank you very much. Thank you. With that, then, we are adjourned. Thank you for being with us, and a congratulations to our two newest council members. Thank you.